Okay, I'm going to call that meeting to order. My name is Dan Coxworth and I'm the Director of Development Services. At the beginning of a new year, we have to elect a new chair. The previous chair is no longer on the commission and the vice chair did not show up today. So I will act in that capacity until a new chair is elected, which is one of the first items on our agenda today. The meeting is, the time is now four o'clock and we'll call this meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First, we'll go over some ground rules. And I'm going to have to read from the screen. Okay. Please turn off your cell phones or at least silence the ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, fill out a speaker information form and submit to the planner before the start of the meeting. If you're the applicant, you do not need to fill this form out. Speakers must use the microphone to capture comments in the minutes. We have a speaker's clock and have time limits. Five minutes for a call to the public, 10 minutes for the applicant, five minutes for supporters or those against the docket, and five minutes for applicants rebuttal. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three are from cities, one in each district, at least six from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono, it's volunteer. A quorum is five commissioners. Majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. For special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. Appeals of special use decisions can be made to the board of supervisors and filed within 15 days of the commission's approval. Appeal procedures can be obtained on the county website. We also have forms here. For assistance, you may also contact one of the county planners. Dockets other than special use requests result in recommendations forwarded to, forwarded by the commission to the board of supervisors. Typically, it's a rezoning. To voice disagreements with these recommendations, attend the board of supervisors' public hearing dealing with that docket. All right, so we will do a roll call. Mr. Montgomery? Maybe he's on the phone? See, to unmute, is it pound five? Does anybody know? We'll come back to Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Pugh?
Here.
Mr. Watkins? Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Mr. Martzki? Ms. Welch? And Mr. Saunders. Mr. Montgomery? Are you able to unmute? Okay, well, we do have a quorum and we will continue. If he's not able to unmute, it's difficult for him to participate this, in this meeting and give his vote. Mr. Montgomery, if you need to, I would hang up and call back. And hopefully, we won't need to mute you. Hopefully, you're in a quiet spot. All right, so first order of business is the election of a chair and a vice chair. I will call for a motion to elect a chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission for this year 2023.
Mr. Director? I move that Kim DePew be our chair. A second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none.
Continuing on, our previous chairman's term has expired, so now you have me. Thank you for your support. We have to elect a vice chair. Do we have any nominations or volunteers for the vice chair?
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt for a moment, can you please speak into the microphone? It's very quiet on this end.
How's that, Robert?
Much better, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a volunteer or a nomination for vice chair?
Preferably, yes, but not required.
I move we keep our same vice chair, Mr. Saunders.
Second. Is it possible to table that?
Yeah, since we have a chair this meeting, I think it's fine, as long as you promise to be here next month.
February's fine.
We'll need a motion to table the election of the vice chair until the February 8th meeting.
So moved.
Go ahead, Kim, call for that vote.
Sure.
Table it, just.
So that motion to elect the vice chair is tabled until February. Thank you. Now, we move to call to the public. Pursuant to ARS Section 38, 431,01, Section H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, a commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing the staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. There is no call to public forums? Mr. Director?
None received. You may want to ask the audience if anybody wishes to speak.
Is there anyone on the phone or in the audience that would like to address that call to the public? Hearing no answer. We will move to the approval of the previous minutes.
Mr. Montgomery?
Mr. Martzki?
I move that we approve that, ma'am.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Mr. Young? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, second the motion. Shall we use roll call or shall we do?
You know, it's really up to you, Madam Chair. You can, you only have one person on the phone.
If I may, Madam Chair and Mr. Coxworth, if we can please do roll call on all of them for the ease of the minutes. It's sometimes very hard to distinguish between voices and video.
Very well, let's do a roll call vote to approve the minutes. Mr. Montgomery, have you joined us? Mr. Lindbach is absent in District 1. I'm present, District 1, and I vote aye on the minutes. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I'm staying.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders and Ms. Welch are absent. The minutes are approved. Now, we'll move to the public hearing portion. We have item 1. It is docket RZ 22-23. The name of Dunn on Davis Road. Docket RZ 22-23 is a request to rezone parcel 40421012A from R9 Residential, 1 dwelling per 9,000 square feet, to RU4, which is rural, 1 dwelling per 4 acres. The applicant is Ms. Laura Dunn. Call for the planning director's presentation on item 1.
Good evening. This is an applicant initiator request to rezone. The applicant is Laura Dunn, who is present. And their request is to downzone from R9 zoning residential, 1 dwelling per 9,000 square feet, to RU4 zoning rule, 1 dwelling per 4 acres. The parcel is in land use category and designation D rule. The existing use is single-family residential. No additional development is proposed. This has been requested in order for the applicant to qualify for a USDA loan refinancing. The property is located on APN 40421012A at 3876 West Davis Road in McNeil. It's 10.13 acres in size. And here are some site photos. The house is constructed on the southern end of the parcel. It was constructed in 1963. There are some additional residential structures behind the house. The rear and western side of the lot is undeveloped. The northernmost 3 acres of the parcel are within the 100-year floodplain. Here is the current zoning. The R9 designation encompasses much of the 450 acres in the McNeil area, except for the 10 acres fronting Highway 191. There are some vacant parcels directly to the west. These are approximately 2.75 acres each. There is some rural zoning to the south. This is 1,450-acre vacant parcel in private ownership. And east is a 650-acre parcel that's home to Ethnos Aviation, which includes an airstrip and RV resort. In terms of factors in favor of approval, this request complies with all applicable rezoning factors. The current R9 zoning is pretty intense designation. There is no sewer or community water system in this immediate area. This parcel and others in the area are served by private well and septic. By density, this 10.13-acre parcel would permit over 40 single-family homes by right. As I mentioned before, about 3 acres of parcels within floodplain. A lower-density designation makes development outside the floodplain more feasible if they choose. The parcel is adjacent to RU4 zoning, making this request an expansion of an existing zoning district. And finally, the request will increase consistency between land use and zoning. The land use for the parcel is D rule. RU4 is a permitted zoning district within the land used, while the existing R9 is not. In terms of factors against approval, the request would move the parcel from a residential category to rule, which is not the same and generally allows a much larger range of permitted uses by right and special uses. And it does somewhat break up the existing pattern, leaving a line of high-density residential to the west. I'll now pause for discussion by the commission and for the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Is there any questions at this time from the commission? Moving forward, we now declare the public hearing open and call for the applicant's statement. Is the applicant in the room? Hello, could you come forward to the microphone, please? We need your name and address before you start.
My name is Laura Dunn. My address is 375 East Seven Seas Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona, 85122. And this property was my father's. He has passed, and so my sister and I now own this property. We would like to keep this property within the family. We are happy to know that my daughter, Michelle, is interested in purchasing this property. She has the opportunity to purchase the property through a USDA loan, home loan. And in order for the property to be eligible, the property needs to be rezoned.
Is there any more?
That's about it. We're hoping that it could be rezoned so my daughter can purchase this property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask if there's anyone else that would like to make a statement either online or in the room regarding this docket. Hearing none. I'm presuming you have nothing further to say at this moment? Okay. The public hearing is now closed. We call for commission discussion. Applicants, I mean, the board may ask either the applicant or Christine, any questions about this docket? Are there any? All right, no questions, Mr. Young?
No.
All right, thank you. So could we now please have the planning director's summary and recommendation?
Staff recommends conditional approval. The only condition being a standard one, that the applicant sign a waiver of claims form for diminution of value. There's no specific conditions that staff recommends, other than that. And that concludes my presentation. I have a sample motion on the slide. And again, I'm available for any questions.
Calling for the motion, please.
Chairman?
Mr. Martzki?
I move to recommend approval of the board of supervisors for the rezoning docket RZ 22-23, located on parcels 404-21-012A from RU4 to RU4. Conditions of approval recommended by staff. Factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
In a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Are there any other discussion? We'll call for the vote at this time. Mr. Montgomery is not on the phone, I'm presuming. Chairman votes aye. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Saunders and Welch are absent. The motion passes. Five to zero. Thank you. Motion has passed. Good luck. And you can ask, you can contact the staff with any further questions. Moving on to item 2. Docket RZ 22-24. The applicant's name is Knox. They request a rezoning from SR22, single residential, 1 dwelling per 22,000 square feet, to RU4, rural, 1 dwelling per 4 acres. The applicants are Mr. Benjamin and Mrs. Felicia Hips. At this time, I call for the planning director's presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you able to hear me and see my screen?
Yes, we are.
Great, so as stated, the applicant is Mr. Benjamin and Mrs. Felicia Hips. They are online this evening. Current zoning of the property is SR22, which is a single residential, 1 dwelling per 22,000 square feet. Proposed zoning is RU4, which is rural, 1 dwelling per 4 acres. It is in growth category D with the plan designation of rural. It is located within the Mid-Sulfur Springs Valley Community Plan. Existing uses, there is recreational vehicles, some solar out there and some sheds. The proposed uses will be a permitted single-family residence. It is located between Knox and Justin Streets, west of Sherwood Road in Sun sites. Parcel numbers are identified as 11614, 174 and 75, and 11614, 157 through 159. They are identified with the yellow box on the screen. The total size of the parcels is 4.33 acres. These are some photographs of the site. You can see they have some improvements already on the property. They would like to submit and get a permit for a opt-out residence on the property. This is their site plan, showing where the house will be located, with access off of Knox and then, at some point in time, access out to Justin Street, which will need to be at least greater improved as it's a two-track trail at this point. All the factors used to review the request, staff found all the applicable rezoning factors to be compliant. And the request is within keeping with the character of the existing development in the area. We found no factors against the approval. We will actually have in March, another docket, catty-corner to this one, requesting the same zone change. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you. We now declare the public hearing open. Call for the applicant's statement. Is it Mr. Hips?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you. It's time for your statement. If you'd say your name and address and then let us know your intentions on this application.
So my name is Ben Hips. My current physical address is 195 East Geneva Street, Pierce, Arizona. I am hoping to be able to fire an opt-out permit and build a small residence here on the property. That is my main goal for the rezoning.
Is that the end of your statement, Mr. Hips?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much. At this time, we accept comments from other persons, either in favor or against. Are there any online or in the room? There are no additional comments? Mr. Hips, I presume you waived your rebuttal period?
Yes.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. It's time for the commission discussion. Do you have any questions for the applicant or staff? No questions? Call for the planning director's summary, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff does recommend a conditional approval. We do have a condition that all parcels shall be combined into one parcel prior to the issuance of any permits. There is a sample motion on the screen for the board this evening.
Calling for the motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend approval to the board of supervisors for the rezoning docket RZ 22-24 Knox, located on parcels 116-14-175, 174-175, and 116-114-157 through 159. SR22 to RU4, for the conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Gonzalez, a second? Is there any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. District 1, DePew votes aye. District 2?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
District 3, Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Larry Saunders and Ms. Welch are absent. This motion passes five to zero. Moving along, item 3. Is docket SU22-29 on Acacia Street? The applicant requests a special use authorization to approve a wireless communication tower of 34 feet and associated equipment. The applicant is Ms. Latoya Phipps, representing Dakota Pro. At this time, could we please have the planning director's presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do believe you should have the property owner as well as two applicants from Dakota Pro in the audience there with you this evening that will speak to the request. As you already stated, this is a request for a wireless communication tower, section for internet cellular. The site is 4 acres. It's on parcel 12402006R. Current zoning and future zoning is RU4 and a change is proposed as a growth category D and designated rural. There is no area plan. The existing use is a single-family home, and there's a temporary communication facility that will be removed and replaced with this permanent structure. But as stated, it is located on Acacia Street. This is in Mezcal. This is what the applicant is putting. So on the left, we have the site plan. And it is located close to Acacia Lane, approximately 36 feet from the edge of the road, which meets our requirements for setbacks. As we'll discuss in a little bit, there was two letters of opposition received on this request. One was from the adjoining neighbor. Both of those were, opposition was due to the visual impact that this would have. There have been some discussions this afternoon between property owners, and so there may be some moving of this tower. It will not impact the approval by the planning commission should they elect to approve this this evening. It would simply be to move the tower further away from Acacia Lane and still keeping the other setbacks in place. These are some photographs of the site. As you can see, the existing tower there on the left, that is a temporary facility that is providing service in the area. That is Acacia Lane on the top right, a narrow lane, provides access to just a few homes down the road. So again, the public input, the property in question is the yellow parcel. The red boxes are the opposition. And so, as mentioned, there were some discussions as far as moving the tower a little bit further back from Acacia, which may help address some concerns by that one property owner. There are 10 factors that we use to evaluate all special use proposals. As submitted, the application complies with nine. With waivers, it does comply with one additional factor, and that is significant site development standards. So with this request, there are two waivers that the applicant is requesting and staff is recommending approval on both of those. The first waiver is on the setbacks to the east side of the property. I will go back to show so on this screen. It would be the lower portion. The tower will be set back well, far enough away that if there should be a collapse or something of that nature, it would not fall into the neighbor's property. It meets that setback. But the solar equipment would only be 30 feet and not the total 30-foot in height. So staff is recommending approval of that waiver. The second waiver is that our code requires co-location. So at least the ability for two wireless facilities to locate on towers from 0 to 150 feet in height on a 34-foot-tall tower, that's just not possible. In addition, this is not a cellular-type tower. This is a wireless internet. And, you know, there's not a lot of other wireless internet carriers out there. In addition to that, there would be a problem with the signals if there were to be two internet carriers located on that tower. And the applicant could explain that better if there's any questions by the commission. And one factor is not applicable, and that is the water conservation. The project complies with nine of the criteria used to evaluate special use requests, and the proposed use would maintain an expanded range and quality of internet and wireless data coverage within the immediate area. Factors against, we did receive two letters in opposition. And there are two modifications or waivers that are requested as part of this proposal. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Are there any questions from commission, Mr. Kirschman, at this time? Hearing none, let's declare the public hearing open. Call for the applicant's statement, please. The lead speaker needs to state name and address, please.
I'll start. I'm Samantha Hammer. I'm the property owner. So my address is 3182 West Acacia Lane. And, okay, just to say, like, I support the project and would like to continue having better internet out in our area for my neighbors, too.
My name's Bill Bosman. I'm the president of Dakota Pro. We're the partnering company trying to erect the tower to service the area. We have a number of customers in the area, and everybody wants higher speeds. And the reason we're building this tower, want to build this tower, is that we'll be able to offer higher-speed plans to all the neighbors in the area. And so we're obviously in favor of this proposal. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name's Luke Fulcomer. I'm the wireless engineer for Dakota Pro. Obviously, I approve of this installation. Being a part of Dakota Pro is very exciting. And we try to deliver great internet to the Mezcal area, and we're trying to keep that continuing. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to call for other statements from other persons in favor or against. Is there anyone online? No one in the room? You waived your rebuttal period, I presume? Public hearing is now closed. Public hearing is now closed. Call for Commission discussion, either for applicant or staff. Are there any questions?
Yes, this is Mr. Young. I have a question.
Mr. Young?
How many homes would this antenna serve?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Young, I would ask the applicant to come back up and answer that. I believe they provide that data in the report, but I just, I can't recall that.
I can directly answer the question. Currently, the tower supports approximately 60 customers, and with the upgrade to the tower, would it support approximately an additional 40, so a total of 100.
Could you state one more?
My name is Luke Fulcomer. I'm the wireless engineer for Dakota.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Young, any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Well, now for the Planning Director's summary and recommendation, please. Mr. Kirschman?
My apologies, I had my microphone muted. So staff has a recommendation for conditional approval of this request. There is one other thing I just did want to add. The height setback in this area, the RU4, is 30 feet. So if they were to reduce that whip antenna down to 30 feet, it would significantly reduce their coverage, but they would essentially be in compliance. So we are essentially talking about a four-foot difference, requiring us to go for a conditional use rather than being permitted as a matter of right. Additionally, any residents out there, they could build a garage, a house, barn, radio antenna, et cetera, at 30 feet in height at a 20-foot setback. So the, one of the reasons that staff is recommending the conditional approval is that this is actually much less of an impact than other items or other things that could be done in the vicinity. So with that, we do recommend conditional approval with conditions, that the maximum height of the wireless tower shall be limited to 34. No signage other than emergency signage will be allowed to this wireless communication facility. The facility owner shall notify the county zoning inspector of any proposed frequency changes outside of the ranges specified within the application and approved by Fort Wachuka. The facility owner shall be responsible for maintenance in a manner consistent with the original approval facility. An equipment cabinet shall display a legible contact number for reporting maintenance problems to the facility owner. And the temporary tower shall be removed within 90 days of the final inspection of the new facility. And there is a sample motion on the screen for the Commission to see names.
Motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve docket SU22-29, Acacia, on parcel 124-02-006R, with the conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors of approval constituting findings of fact.
A second? Mr. Marfsky, thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion before we vote? Mr. Young?
No.
All right, a call for the vote. We'll start with District Three. Mr. Marfsky? Saunders and Welch are absent. District Two, Nathan Watkins?
Yeah.
Albert Young?
Yes.
Jerry Gonzalez?
Yes.
And District One, Kim Dupew votes aye. This motion passes five to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your tower. That's the end of our docket items. Mr. Coxworth, do you have a report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy New Year to the Commission. Thank you, Kim, for stepping up. I know it's not really easy to jump into the position, but I think you're going to do great this year. That being said, we, I think, we're starting off the year with a pretty heavy workload. We've got six dockets for next month. They're all special uses. And then March is also shaping up to be somewhat of a busy month for us as well. Currently, three dockets. On that, I don't have anything else unless, Robert, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Call to the Commissioners. Anybody have any questions? I have one. Did SU22-24 from last month, war performance, did they file an appeal? They did not. Thank you. Thank you very much. It says you're on here twice, Dan. Do you want to go again?
Oh, sure. Do you want me to repeat my?
I think this meeting is adjourned.
Oh, thank you.
We have more?
Just the other thing. Christine did present two zoning changes, or two zoning regulation changes for the solar farms and the wind farms, and those did pass by the Board of Supervisors yesterday, so the zoning regulations will be updated and take effect, I think, in 30 days. Is that the rule? So we are seeing somewhat of an influx in solar projects. There's a few that will be coming your way, and those new rules will apply.
Very good. Anything else from anyone? Meeting adjourned.